We're calling the Dune City Council meeting to order at 6:01. Roll call please, Jamie.
Councilman Richard Olson.
President.
Counselor Tom Mallon. Counselor Melissa Stenton.
President.
Council President and Acting Mayor Susan Smith.
Can we all stand for the Budgetal Agent?
The Budgetal Agent is to reply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have need to amend the agenda to add the minutes of the August night's special session. So I need a motion to amend the minutes to add up.
So moved.
Second.
They all in favor?
Aye.
Me too. Need approval of the consent agenda.
As amended. The consent agenda as amended because it added the minutes to the consent agenda.
That was to the agenda. That's that to the consent agenda.
Uh huh.
Okay. All right.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Jamie, you have an announcement?
Excuse me. Yes, I do. If you were in the Westlake area today and you are missing an item that perhaps you may have left on the top of your car so that it fell off, it has been found. It has been emptied of all of its contents, but we do have it here at City Hall. Just call to identify and we'll make arrangements to return it to you. They didn't quite take all the cash. There's still some in there. That's a good sign. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there citizen input? And this is for any input that's not on the agenda tonight. Gail Nichols?
No.
Sherry Loftus?
Yes, I do have some input.
You have three minutes.
Excuse me?
You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Sherry Loftus. I'm fairly new to the community. I do not reside actually in Dune City. I reside in the Lane County and I'm located on the corner of Clear Lake Road and Darling Slough. There's a 30 acre lot and that's where I reside. I currently have been building my home there now for about going on 18 months and it's been a long, long time coming, but we're getting closer. The reason I'm here tonight is I'm here to seek assistance from the council. We are having an issue with an individual that lives adjacent to us who is, has become a public nuisance. I did obtain a copy of the ordinance, the city ordinance for Dune City. He actually resides in Dune City. And so I'm seeking assistance, hoping to have the nuisance abated. Currently, well, actually for the past 18 months, he has been very diligent about trying to run us off our property by playing music at excessively levels above 80 to 90 decibels, which is really detrimental to your physical and mental health, especially mine, a senior citizen. I'm very hard of hearing and I can hear all of the, the music, the howling, the yelling, the screaming that this gentleman is doing. We have tried to intervene. We, when we first moved here, started building, we discussed it with our immediate neighbors in that area off a dire lane, dire way. We did let them know that we would have construction going on, that we would keep the hours from about eight to five during the business week. And on Fridays, we have construction going from eight till noon. This gentleman is currently causing the intense mental and physical stress. I'm losing sleep because he plays music all hours of the night. He yells and screams. And so I am here this evening seeking your assistance.
Are you in the 10 acre parcels right off of the highway?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan? Can't read handwriting. Rapunzel?
I don't have anything.
Chris and Amber?
No input.
Linda Roberts?
Not right now. Thanks.
Mike Kirk?
No, I don't have anything.
Jimmy Jackson?
Yes. Are the letters that were sent in being read this evening?
We have them in our packet.
Okay, but they will not be read out loud?
We usually don't if they're in the packet because that's part of the.
Okay. Well, I must ask since letters haven't been read in a long time by my sister who called Jamie and was not able to attend tonight because of a problem with her foot, to read her letter. And I was prepared to do that. I told her I'd read. It's a short letter. Did I do that?
You have three minutes. So what happens when you have three minutes?
All right. Dear Dune City Council, I will take out my mask for the sake of reading. I am writing regarding the proposed hazard mitigation plan. It is my understanding that the grant would fund the hazard mitigation program that if awarded, the grant would allow the city to make needed repairs to city streets and damage due to tree roots, et cetera, and ensure that all streets meet requirements for emergency vehicles to enter and exit. These are positive outcomes and worth working on to achieve. I am concerned however that details about September's council meeting regarding the need to provide about details in the September council meeting about needing to provide a 10-foot setback on all sides of the street and that it would necessitate the removal of tree and vegetation 10 feet from the sides of all roads. Personal research indicates that this is a misleading, misreading of the law. The 10-foot setback measurement begins at the center lane, not on the sides of the streets. Major city streets such as Pacific Avenue, Clear Lake Road already meet this requirement. I agreed with the city council members who have recommended the city meet with the local fire department prior to reading, to writing this grant. Fire departments make the final decisions regarding the legitimacy of fire hazards. It would probably be advisable to contact the city's attorney as well before implementing a grant that would involve the seizure of private property. Should the city prove to exercise its right of eminent domain for the purpose of hazard mitigation, the city will need to purchase the property required for mitigation from the current property owners. If the city were to obtain the grant to employ its current understanding of the setback mitigation, many citizens and businesses would lose treasured trees and lovingly chosen landscaping. Equally, if not more important, Dune City would lose much of its charm and world quality. Many citizens would not support such a plan.
Thank you very much.
Do I have one minute left? I just wanted to comment on.
You don't.
Okay. I just am very concerned that the mayor's been chosen, chosen without public input. That concerns me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie, you came in after lunch. Do you have anything?
I'll say my rights.
Okay. I don't know the lady's name that came and was sitting next to you.
Pam.
She is Sarah. We have to do a city.
Okay. Thank you all for that. Just give me one moment. We can just get those. All right. Let's have an update from the mayor candidate recommendation meeting.
So we held a total of five people that applied for the position. Two of them were nominations. Those two people removed themselves from the nominations. A third person was not a Dune City resident and therefore could not apply as a requirement. Fourth person was interviewed, was our sole interviewer because he is the only one that applied within the time limit and still held through to that. And our fifth one applied out of the time window of accepting applications. So therefore, based on the committee, which was Council Olson, Council on Mallon and myself, we interviewed this one gentleman and we feel that he is an appropriate candidate to lead us and where we see coming across for Dune City in regards to, in a positive way, in regards to a lot of things that we're going to be currently, to be addressing and things that we are currently addressing.
I wasn't called on.
Your application was received after the time of the window closed.
I was called to bring you down.
We, I apologize, sir. We had put out that all applications were due by September 15th.
You're going to give the membership to someone who's been here three months?
Sir, I'm not here to argue. We had a stipulation as to what time the applications were.
And he's from Nevada. He's been here for a few months. Is that the one?
Three months.
Yeah, that's where you're not giving locals any input at all in our own community.
Actually, everybody had the ability to apply for the position. Yes, they did. And they chose not to.
But you're not to be involved in the choosing of the mayor, which.
Ms. Jackson, we are all appointed by you guys in regards to make the best decisions for our city and that's what we have chosen to do.
You get to pick who's on the ballot. We get to pick whoever you choose. That is not giving us a choice.
When the mayor resigns, we actually can do a selection of a mayor to fill the term and then you will get to vote when the term ends.
Next year.
Then everybody can apply. And the term does not end until November 24.
Why can't you do it this November?
It's too late.
It's too late. I just think it's so unfair. None of us have been allowed to talk or read our letters and now you have chosen the very person I was afraid you would. And while he seems like a nice enough man, he moved here from Nevada. He knows nothing of our area and our residents know very little of him.
All right. I understand. I wish you were to be with you. I'm telling you how things went and, and we're, and she is giving us a report from the committee. So, and this is how it's, how it works. So.
When was it made public that you had to come in? We just thought you were going to choose yourselves. Nobody thought you had to come down and put in an application. So like when was, when did you notify everybody?
It was actually notified within the council meeting on camera of the requirements that needed to be into for someone to apply for the position.
But the same meetings where you didn't read letters out loud or allow those of us who were confused about.
Ms. Jackson, his question was in regards to the interim mayor positions. So that's what I've addressed.
I'm just, sorry. I'm glad you asked. I'm sure he's concerned.
So the appointment of the mayor will take place since he is unable to be here tonight. He has already had a work meeting. He will be sworn in next month and.
Did he catch COVID from not wearing a mask? Because last meeting I went to where Jamie had COVID, she wouldn't wear a mask.
Ms. Jackson, you cannot keep interrupting us.
Okay, but we don't need to know.
Thank you. You cannot keep interrupting us. Okay. So the selection of, the committee was Ed McGuire and I need a nomination, I mean a.
A motion.
A motion. Thank you for the word. A motion from the council.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. There will be with the resignation of Counselor Hammond and there is an opening on the council.
There are two.
And I know there will be a second one.
No, he has already submitted his resignation.
He did submit. So there will be two because Paul Orino was going to be leaving. He has other things. So there will be two openings on the council. So at this point in time, it is the call for candidates. You must come down and fill out an application and put it in.
And we have received two already.
We, yes, but I think we need to do it publicly and announce to everyone.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's, they need to, they have an opportunity to put in for, and I'm looking for the date I wrote down. I would like any, all applications to be in by November 2nd. That will give you a couple of weeks to get your application in. And.
Is, is my application sufficient that I put in? Or do I need to come and redo it?
Did you put down for city council?
Yes.
And it is sufficient. So we will then hold interviews with all the candidates and. Sorry, knew that was going to happen to my daughter. So she's trying to get ahold of somebody. We will then hold interviews with all the candidates and do a selection just like we did for mayor and just like we've done for candidates in the past. So I would like to head up that committee and I need two volunteers to be on that committee.
I have a question. Should we be giving them longer than two weeks? People have other things and so I'm just not sure two weeks is long enough time.
It's actually three weeks.
From date of today?
Isn't it three weeks?
Nope. That'd be just about 15 days if you're staying November 2nd.
Okay. So we'll give it until November 8th then. I thought it was three weeks.
November 8th? Thank you for that.
So do I have volunteers for the committee? There's only three or four that's here, so.
There's not much option right now.
I'll do if someone needs to be, I can definitely help.
I have one question.
Excuse me. I need to finish what I'm doing here.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So Rich, Melissa and myself will be on the committee for the candidates.
If you need one, I can do.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
We'll see how long.
Things work out for timeframes for people.
You can have more than three. You can have more than.
I know that. I said, we'll see how the time works out for some people. If something can't do it, then we'll put Tom in, okay? Yes, sir.
Don't you think it would have been more sufficient if the council members would have been picked first so you would have a full vote of council members to pick the president? Because only the council members could pick the president. Don't you think it should have been?
For the president and no.
Maybe the mayor.
The council members left after we had already started the process for the mayor. So that was, would not work.
I mean, it seems like since only the council members and not the public are involved in picking the mayor, it seems like only the smartest thing would have been done is to fill all the seats back up and then go forward and.
They were vacant.
To the mayor. I know they were vacant.
They weren't vacant.
They weren't vacant at the time. That's what I'm telling you, sir. So we're going to move on with our agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Hazard mitigation plan. Jamie, do you want to give us some?
The city was required to consider and approve the Lane County Hazard Mitigation Plan by, I think it's the end of this month. So the plan is here if anybody wants to read it. What I gave to you is our section, our appendix, our annex. And that I did participate in writing, but it would be helpful if you took some time and reviewed it and make sure that that's how you understand what we had talked about. I believe when I wrote it, I brought it to the council for approval and you did approve it. And so I submitted it, but just to be sure that nothing has changed since then, I won't let you read it.
I'm just, how do we come up with some of the weights that are in there?
The weights.
The weights.
There's a formula that's provided in the plan and that was done before I even came to Dune City, so I don't know.
Okay. Because I think some of the weights are off. The debts just look weird with some of them.
Yeah, it was done with some engineering creative thing, I don't know.
Again, so do you want us to look at this more or what are you asking for?
Well, since the deadline is coming up and you're not going to be able to take, if you want to look at it now, I mean, it's not very big. If you want to look at it and discuss it and ask questions about it now, that would be fine.
I have, I've read it thoroughly. Is it normally just the staff that writes it?
It's staff in conjunction with the experts that are working with the county and with Florence, City of Florence through We Love.
Okay. Any council members have any questions?
I'll need kind of further reader.
Right now, our only mitigation activities that we have planned would be the retrofit for the stove here at City Hall and for the evacuation trail and the, and evacuation building, vertical evacuation facility also on the parklands, which is, how do I describe it? It's where Chet's trail comes, doesn't come, but is mapped to come all the way down to South Pioneer. The only evacuation area in the event of tsunami or earthquake is Westlake. And so this would provide the Westlake area residents an evacuation. It's uphill and then it would be a building that has a circular for access by handicapped individuals in wheelchairs. I'm sure others would help them get up there to get to the top of the building and be able to be safe from any inundation from the 122-foot wave they expect to come in. Other than that, you can evacuate out of the US 101 because that will be inundated with water. So this is the only way that I can see is get you up to the top of the dune and either leave you there within the evacuation facility, which at this point in time, we have some designs and some ideas for designs. We were going to put lockers in there so that each individual who lives in the Westlake area would have their own locker. They can put their own lock on it. And that way you put your evacuation, your go kit, if you will, the things that you want with you in that locker, lock it up so that it's already there and you don't have to worry about grabbing anything when you go. You just take off and go get up in there. It would also provide another, the trail would also provide another evacuation route should any of the forest areas around us, because we're surrounded by forest areas, catch fire. It would give an evacuation route in the, in a fire, an alternative in case you can't get down 101 because the trees are falling and blocking everything. So that's what our evacuation plan for right now. The rest of Dune City isn't as, at as high a risk as the Westlake area is, but we will need to start working on that, on the fire evacuation plan for that area in the future.
How much is this grant? Have you heard?
The grants come out, there's five or six of them. They have already taken place this year and they're covered until next year. They're, they're paying them. They come up all the time and they're anywhere from, we've got one for $5,000 for one for in excess of $200 million if you want. So it's everything, but you are, it's competing nationwide and, and locally, but mostly for the big money is nationwide.
And is it correct that we're not eligible if we don't keep this updated, correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
And we also have to have certain, certain individuals in the office have to be trained for certain things and that training has already occurred so far until we have another turnover, which we're going to have shortly.
To achieve this building and this trail and all of that, do you have a feel at all yet of what that might run cost for?
Well, I know the trail itself is looking at like around $17 million. If it's paved, now I don't anticipate it'll be paved, but.
Does the trail, if it were there, currently would it traverse any private property?
Yes.
How is that now?
Because Chet's trail is already there. Chet's trail cuts through those properties, but I'm not, you know, I'm not one to just say, you know, put a road in there. I'm talking with all of the property owners and they have agreed to work with the city to determine the best place. Most of their land over there is wetlands and as a city, especially in the event of a hiking and biking trail or that kind of thing, we don't have to worry about the wetlands. We have to do it the way we, the state requires it be done, but it is easier for a city, especially for transportation purposes and for emergency escape routes. It is easy for a city to go ahead and put something in even though there is wetlands and endangered species. By the way, that's why it's so expensive. By the way, that's why it's so expensive. Excuse me, I said 17 million, 1.7 million. Yeah, 1.7 million, I'm sitting here waiting a minute, there was a dot in there. 17 million, yeah, we'd have it paved with gold, you know, dollars. I don't know, that's without the building. The building itself, I'd have to get the lands from Japan, which shouldn't be a problem, but... It looks like a lighthouse, I mean aesthetically, it looks like a lighthouse, which I thought would be an ideal thing for this area is to have something that looks, that ties in to the ocean and water.
With the city and these private landowners, we have to agree on a price, right?
Well, the private landowners, we're already getting easements now because I'm trying to get it all together so that we can move forward on at least the hiking and biking trail part. Because we got that grant five years ago and we're supposed to have it done by now.
Okay, so there is an existing easement to allow to this work?
Yes, and it's been confirmed by the court in 1992.
Can we not start that in phases so that we're utilizing that money within the timeframe?
Well, we've already used the money to purchase the property, which is what we needed to do. What we have, well, we'll talk about it in budget. That's where it would start, because the discussions would be in the budget committee meeting.
I don't have any more questions or concerns with this. Does anybody else have anything they want or do we have anything else?
Who was this busy with, configured?
You're saying estimated about, an estimated cost of 1.7 million.
That's just for the one condition?
Just for the one?
Yes. It's actually mitigation action item B, is what she's talking about.
So it's not incorporating all the other costs?
No, that's the one that she's looking at now. No, it'd be unrealistic for us to try and do all of this in here.
Well, Lane County is responsible, well, we probably have quite a few in there, but...
There's quite a few things in here, yes. It's quite happy, some of the ones she's talking about, those just... So, do I have a motion to?
Only if a motion is we accept the mitigation plan as...
Sir?
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey. You have a mitigation plan, so looking?
Okay, what I will do is draft up a resolution that you can...
All right, can you give us the, I know you're writing, give us the next information on the solid waste collection license?
I spoke with the new owners of both companies and double-checked the address and that was part of the problem is that I was sending it to an old address. So he now knows it's there, I emailed him, he has it and he will, he's going to do everything he can to make sure it gets paid. Now, he will not be able to pay one that was owing, some of the back stuff is owing from the other company, which no longer exists now, so we're just going to have to write that off.
Did they buy out the other company?
As far as I know, but I don't know what the terms were.
I was going to say.
I can spend, I can spend attorney money on it if you want me to, but it's not worth it.
How much is involved?
Twenty-five hundred.
And the companies, these are pumping companies?
No, no, they're the garbage collection companies.
So it's counting the transfer and?
Well, it's only one.
Now, they're central coast, it used to be county transfer and waste management.
To me, that's off a lot of money, just like Westlake would stay out there in present conflict, I mean, attorney's involved. Twenty-five hundred dollars.
All I can do is try.
I think we need, if it's money, so to us, I think we need to figure out.
I'd like a phone call to the attorney just to find out what he thinks would be something we should do.
Yeah, I don't see just rolling over and saying, yeah, no problem, I agree with this.
Well, we'll see if we're allowed to see the agreement, because we may not be allowed to see the agreement. So we wouldn't know what the terms were, whether they were supposed to pay or not.
But the attorney can tell us whether or not?
We can have Mark.
Therapy versus this, are we going to, is it going to be a wash or is it? Probably a wash.
I have seen the bills this month.
Yeah, so it might be a wash, but it doesn't hurt to ask the question.
That's true.
Thank you. Okay, new business in your packet, you found an agreement between Sidestone Road and New City.
That agreement is in your packet? And it has gone to our attorney, the one that negotiates franchise agreements. And he has his comments in here and...
Those are the ones to the side, the attorney's comments?
And those are Mark's comments and... And I don't know if you want me to take a stab at it, I was going to try and incorporate his recommendations, but I ran out of time because I have all the water measurements due to the state right now.
So this was the proposal from the company?
Yes, this is from the company and I gave it to our attorney.
And then our attorney looked at it and asked for some changes?
Yes.
Potential changes?
Yes. He hasn't asked them, he's sending them to us.
No, to us.
And then we would need to ask.
We have to ask, yeah, understand. He's saying there should be some potential changes to make it beneficial, beneficial for us. And I looked at the comments, I thought they were all good comments. I just didn't agree with them, so... Are you going to have time to try and work on this, Jamie?
Yeah. Yeah, I have to get the water stop done first, but...
Okay, so when can we put this back on the agenda? How much time do you need, Jamie?
I don't know. If I can, if I can get the modern meter readings submitted, then I should be able to get it by the next meeting, but at least that will be the plan for now.
Okay, so do I have a motion to postpone this till the next meeting?
So moved.
Sir?
All in favor? Okay. The next item is a discussion of insurance. But I'm going to caution the council, as long as we talk up here in the open session, we cannot mention the employee name or anything or do any specifics. So I'm telling you that upfront, so nobody says that. Otherwise, if you want specifics, we'll have to go through an executive session.
To explain the letter that we received from the insurance company, the bottom line is this. Either we reimburse them for the payment that they made for the injury or they're going to raise our rates. I mean, seriously, that's how it was, that was the bottom.
I thought it was very nice that they said the payment was optional.
Yeah, right.
That was very nice of them to say it was optional.
And this is a legitimate accident, I saw it right in front of my own eyes.
Okay, so this was an accident, it was okay. So basically, the question is, we need to give Jamie the permission to take this.
For the 1970 donation?
To get further information, just to make sure that we are fully clear on where, why, the reasoning, so...
Yes, we can't unless, because we can't give a choice unless we're into that.
When do we have an executive session?
This was the hospital bill.
I think we need to go to executive session before we discuss the agreement.
Okay, well, we can. Right now, it's not on the agendas, so we can't.
We can have that for the next meeting and still get it done.
No, well, yeah.
Is it, what's the timeframe to pay this?
Stands at 12:04.
So we can't do it by 12:04?
Okay, so we could do it for next meeting?
Correct.
Get it just in time payment, so, all right?
Motion.
We'll put it for next meeting, for the next session.
So if we're going to go?
Or are you going to have a special session for an executive session?
Executive session.
I see, yeah, we have a special session for the executive.
Okay, I heard two different things. Rich said an exec session, you said a special session.
Jamie mentioned that we can have a special session for?
For an executive session.
For an executive session. And that's what we need.
So do you want to meet at, now meeting at the next council, regular council meeting? It's making a new, different council meeting?
If you, if you want to hold a special session, that's fine with me, I don't care.
Is that agreeable to Tom?
That way we can be prepared for our next meeting.
I agree.
Well, you have to have a special session to call an executive session and you can make a decision at that time, not in executive session, you come back out and do, yeah.
And we've got a...
We just need, if they want more information, though, we can't do it here.
Correct, I can't get it anywhere because it's private information.
So we have to notify for special session?
Yeah, I've got to post notice like I always do.
Yeah, which is how long, so we can do this when?
I only have to post notice 24 hours in advance, so it doesn't really matter.
So we have a budget meeting on the second of November, could we do it before the budget meeting?
The second or the fourth?
That's the second.
No, it's the first, Wednesday, the first.
Oh, Wednesday's the first?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so it'd be the first then?
Yeah.
May I ask what the other budget committee members remember?
We're having a meeting on the first.
On the first?
What I have in my calendar.
I went with the owners Wednesday in November, I mean, if I got the dates wrong, it's the first Wednesday in November.
Because that is not what I had. It is now.
Right. So can we do an executive session then?
Prior?
Special session.
A special session, what is executive session, prior to or after?
Prior to, 5:30, and then have the budget meeting at 6:00, would that?
That's fine with me.
Does my calendar know that?
Okay, I'm also worried about you.
Oh, I'll tell him.
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
This is November 1st?
And that way it's in conjunction with another meeting, so it's... All right. So do you need any other information, Jamie?
No.
Does it need to get motioned or we just agree with what we have?
If you do it in motion, it would be better.
Okay, I need a motion?
So moved.
So moved. All in favor?
Rich, I keep wanting to rename you.
Okay, temporary right-of-way use permit for a new Furnaker's water service for the pump and treatment.
As you know, the new Furnaker's water system has a new water treatment facility and new water tanks. Not all of it has been put in yet. We wanted originally to put it on the same property where it was before. However, those property owners, it's not that they weren't cooperative, but they were taking a lot of time and every time we talked to them, they were asking for something else. They wanted us to put in a driveway, they wanted us to clear the lot, there were a lot of things that it kept. And so in order to save money, since our right-of-way is so wide there, we cut out a 10-foot area and they leveled it and, which in a way is great because we've got to do that to that road anyway, there's no turnaround and eventually we've got to get it cut in all the way, all the way down to the end of the road with a three-point turnaround. So it just saved us from having to do that. But it has a pump house and the two large holding tanks for the water on, on our right-of-way, on Alder Drive. And so they have to have a permit from the city in order to do that. And I bring that because it is an actual structure. They have to have a written permit from the city to do that. And it has to go for city council because it has an actual structure. So you can hold off on this, this is no real rush. If you want to go down there sometime on your own and go see what is going on and what has taken place so far, the system is not up and running yet, but it will be very soon, so that you could see where it is and how it is and... There are, one, two, three, there are only four houses on that road.
How many, how many houses are intended to be served by that, do you know?
14.
14.
Do we have an incomplete map here?
That's just showing you where it is, that's not showing you the system, where the water system is.
But the indication on the red is where the system's going to be?
That is where the pump, I mean, the pump house and the tanks are. And the line to the lake. The system you approved a long time ago.
So this is just the permit to put, to use our right-of-way?
Uh huh. And it does not affect the right-of-way?
I'd like to get some eyes on it myself, I'd like to wait till the next meeting.
Absolutely. I'd like to have a motion.
Make a motion that we move this to the next meeting, so we have an opportunity.
Regular session?
Regular session.
Second? Go for it, Tom.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the next, I'd like to start putting some things on our calendar to do goal-setting sessions so that we can start out 2024 with some goals. So I'd like to know when would be some good times on the calendars? If I see that it would be, we only count three left this year due to holidays, it'd be 8 November, 2 December, or 9 December. Are any of those good dates for anyone to meet? That's keeping the meetings on Wednesday.
I think you'd do the 8th of November, but that'd be about it for November.
Yeah, neither two are December.
You're saying December 6th and 13th, correct?
When the Wednesdays are, I was doing that.
I could use 6th of December.
What about you, Tom?
He does, it's fine.
6th is fine for me.
Okay, why don't we do a goal-setting session on the 6th of December then?
What time?
What time is 6th and 13th?
I'll make it, you set it and I'll make it.
What's best for everybody?
5, 5:30? 5:30?
5:30, let's make it 5:30?
Where? Here?
Right here.
If you want me to order in pizza or anything. Well, if you decide you want to make it potluck, let me know.
Okay, we'll let you know as it gets closer, how's that?
That's fine. Goal-setting slash Christmas party?
Oh, that's right, we could do a Christmas party at the same time, huh? All right. There are no public hearings and no executive session. So we move on to reports. There's no mayor's report, community center report, James?
Everything continues, thankfully. I think we have gotten all the dead critters out of the way. Smells better in here anyway. That's the only problem, we're still waiting on a hot water heater in the ladies' room. There is a permit report in your packet, by the way.
Okay. Water quality, the water's going up. Hopefully, we get enough water, the dam is open and Sandy can get in. But the water's doing fine. I don't have, I don't have any reports of, from Stephen Hager that there's any issues with the water right now. Any road reports?
Lake Torrey looks good, Cordway looks good, but I did have a citizen say that Tina Nelson, in regards to, you said a hemlock had a possible issue?
It's a branch.
Branch? Okay.
It's root.
Root. So we need to make sure, I'm not sure it goes past that street, but we do need to get an eye on that.
Hemlock in Westlake?
Yeah, right up the street. It's just right down, you walk through it.
Oh, right down here?
Yes.
You mean like a root growing through?
No, uh-uh, the branch broke and it fell down and, yeah.
It sounds like there's two issues.
There's two issues. The other one's on the other side of the lake.
Oh, there's two hemlocks?
Yeah, there's two hemlocks.
Well, this hemlock has a branch in the road.
This is a branch and this one's a root that grows underneath the road and it's rooted up the road to the point, you don't see it in the dark because there's no lighting, so...
Where is the other hemlock? In Glenada?
Close to Ted's house, where Sandy used to.
Oh, okay.
I guess he's complained about it quite some...
I know there is, there are several private roads over there, so it may be, but I'll check.
So can we do a hemlock east and a hemlock west? How do you guys tell me?
Are you kidding?
We've gone all over, all over. Albert and Albert and there, it's actually Port Road Drive and Street, but it's a nightmare.
Is to at least take some of that paint and go out there and paint on that lane.
Well, not if it's not our road. So that's what I got to find out.
Okay.
Okay, so you're going to check on that road?
Yeah.
Any other roads? Issues? Thank you. Tina, did you have something for us? Okay.
I can get the address if you need it.
Permit report is in the back?
It's in your packets.
Yes, in the back, that's what I said, in the back.
There was one structural for a new dock, four electrical, and six public works. One tree removal, two erosion controls, two driveways, and one excavating. And there is one new build going on.
All right, and you know what ERO meant, so thank you for telling me.
ERO?
It really says E-R-O.
Oh, yeah, erosion.
So it's erosion. I mean, right after that, so I can bring the users, okay. All right, for the good of the order, Rich, do you have anything?
I don't have anything, Rich.
Allison?
Looking you.
Okay, I don't have anything, thank you all very much. Do you have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Can you word it?
Thank you.